I would like to call the Township of Wayne Fleet Special Council Meeting to order, January 19, 2021. And we have the land acknowledgement statement. I'd like to begin this meeting by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe and the Haudenosaunee peoples, acknowledging the one ball, spoon, and treaty. Are there any disclosures of interest? Okay, saying none, we'll move right into the admin staff report, the memo from our C A O, and I'll ask Mr. Colossus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to council. The purpose for the memorandum and for the special meeting, again, thank you all very much for taking time this Tuesday evening unscheduled to sort of consider this. The purpose of this memorandum is to bring to your attention the sort of new information that's arisen as a result of the province-wide lockdown and stay-at-home order that was issued over the course of the last several weeks, I suppose. At the last regular council meeting, there was a staff report brought forward, providing information about COVID-19 in a regular update. And in that, we discussed arena operations and sort of the plans for the arena through the lockdown process. In that report, we noted that the then lockdown was originally scheduled to conclude by January 23rd. And staff at that time were recommending that the ice surface be left in until at least that time, such that effective January 24th, for example, members of the public would be able to resume ice operations and use of the facility. In light of the new lockdown and stay-at-home orders, which are extended to at least February 11th, we thought it prudent to come back to council to revisit the issue of maintenance of the ice surface during the lockdown period and the implications of leaving the ice in unused until the lockdown ends, if it ends before the end of the ice season. Currently, in the previous staff report, there was a sort of financial snapshot that was presented to council, sort of indicating that the cost of maintaining the ice surface over the course of a month ranges in the range of approximately $10,000, plus or minus, again, covering the variable expenses, hydro, gas, wages, and benefits associated with ice being used. In light of the fact that the province has now indicated that the lockdown or the stay-at-home order is in place until at least the middle of February, almost, staff are trying to get some direction and guidance from council as to whether we want to take a purely financial approach to this issue and try to cut our losses and contain our costs by removing the ice surface now, as opposed to a more public service-related approach, where we try to maintain the ice at additional cost in the event that the lockdown eventually ends and ice users will be able to resume usage of the ice for several weeks prior to the end of the ice season, which usually occurs in early April, middle of April. Again, at this time, based on purely financial merits, staff are strongly suggesting that it be appropriate to sort of cut our losses, remove the ice at this time, and try to contain our costs. But the purpose of the meeting today is to have that discussion and try to answer any questions or thoughts that members of council might have. I know both the director or the manager of finance and the manager of operations both have ability to speak to this, but wondering if there are any sort of discussion or items that members of council would wish to raise at the forefront at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll just go right into questions. I think, John, you were first.
Yeah, just a quick question. What's everybody else doing locally?
Three, I'm going to ask Richard Mann to speak to that. I know he's been reaching out to other municipalities. There are other municipalities that have sort of already gone that route, but Richard, if you could speak to that.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. It's so far from what we gather information-wise, we've heard that Port Coburn and Welland will be closing their arenas. We have been speaking with, we've reached out to the rest of them, and they're in the same boat we are. They're discussing with their senior staff and councils to make that decision. And some are actually discussing that this week with their councils. We have reached out to our contractor as well, Black McDonald, and they currently don't have anything scheduled for shutdown. So basically, if the plant shuts down, the ammonia has to be isolated and contractors such as them, there's only basically two contractors that do it, will be called to basically isolate the ammonia. Like, for instance, Hamilton's been locked down much longer than we are, and they haven't shut down any of theirs yet. So locally, it looks like so far two will be closing their ice surfaces.
Okay, Sherry.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions. So, Richard, you said Port and Welland have closed theirs. But they close all the ice surfaces or just one? Because I know they're multi.
Well, they didn't clarify. Apparently, Welland is talking about at least one facility, if not all of them. And like, maybe Mallory might have an inside scoop on the Port Coburn one, but I believe they were actually talking about closing both pads.
Because I know Welland closed the youth arena and then keeping the main one open. I'm not sure about Port. Maybe Mal can answer that one. But do we have, because at the January meeting, all their ice rental users, group users, said that they would come back. Are they still committed to come back? Because we can leave the ice in until at least the beginning of May.
Yeah, we have had, we have reached out to minor hockey and figure skating, our most extensive user groups, and they are still interested, even if we open in red, because, you know, we had to, they're well aware that it's at limited capacity. So they are interested, as well as additional ice time, if it's available.
Okay, just one more, if I could. Can we, is it possible to turn the compressor temperature down? Or do you have to have it at max all the time?
To be honest, it's actually better if you turn it all the way up and freeze it harder, and it won't run as often, because like, the unfortunate, I mean, well, the good part is we're in the winter season and the cold temperatures. So the plant's not running as long or as often. But again, Mother Nature, you don't know what Mother Nature's going to give us, because if it warms up, the plant kicks on more, et cetera, et cetera, right? So.
Okay. I mean, I think I knew that, but I just needed clarity on it, that the colder the better. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Van Vliet. Yeah, in discussions earlier today, I'm aware that it's about $2,000 a week to keep the ice working there with no revenue coming in. So that's why we thought we should have this discussion, and if we decide to shut it down, that's $2,000 a week we save. So Donna, you had your hand up, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor. That was really what I wanted to focus on. So I think what what Councilor Van Vliet has established is the revenue lines are still locked in. No one's giving up on the idea of coming back. And the cost, so then the cost line is kind of an incremental amount of this $2,000 per week, because the lights are the lights or the hydro's the hydro. So you've been able to isolate that the amount for just the ice is about the $2,000 a week. Then if we wanted to provide this service or consider leaving it in there till February 11th or 12th.
Will?
And just for clarification, closer to $2,500, but yeah, it's the $2,000 to $2,500 per week. Again, depending on factors, like there's so many variables, outdoor temperature, you know, all that sort of stuff comes into play with that, so.
Councilor McCallum?
Yeah, just any of our user groups, and the only reason I'm asking this, I know with Jericho House and some of those places, people have put their down payment down and said, keep it. We're like, we'll pay you for keep what you have. None of these user groups have come up and said, hey, you know, we use $4,000 worth of ice time. We'll give you two to keep the ice on. I'm throwing their hand in the pocket and said, we'll do anything for it.
I can probably answer that, just to jump in. They don't pay in advance?
No, no, but I'm still saying if they want us to keep it in, right, is their goodwill to say, well, here, we'll give you this much to keep it in. We're taking all the risk. If this doesn't go next month, then are we going to say, oh, well, we paid $20,000 or $10,000 this month and $10,000 this month? And, oh, yeah, it looks like we're going to open up in a week. So do we keep it in and we're $25,000 out of pocket? And then all of a sudden, we got nothing, right? Like, usually if you want something to stay in, you're willing to put some of your money where your mouth is.
One other thing, too, that I would just, you know, it's sheer speculation as well, but if we kept our ice in and everybody else goes out, is there a possibility that we would see increased rentals? When everything comes back? So, you know, we may be, you know, the view that way is we could be the only game in town, and therefore we're booked solid, and we actually maybe won't lose that much money, and we provide the service. So that's something I've been thinking about as well, so. Councilor Van Vliet?
That was going to just be a question. Richard, do we know if we keep our ice in, has AAA said anything about doing tryouts, maybe at the end of April, beginning of May, or whatever?
Richard?
Through your worship, we haven't, I mean, they've been talking about all kinds of different scenarios, but they haven't actually committed anything to us. Our normal process is that we're trying to keep our local user groups, give them the rental facility first, because the last thing I want to do is bring in outside agencies, let's put it that way, because we've been, the people from Hamilton and and Ghermit's, they've been trying to get our ice time for months now, and we keep telling them if we have extra ice time, it's going to be our local, we're not going to allow that, the outside potential to come in and spread the virus here.
Again, Councilor Criddland?
Thank you. I'm just going to go back to, you know, the decision we made last time or the recommendation was that we were okay financially up until the 26th. So then, by calling it early, I mean, to me, we've already spent that money with that decision or that recommendation. So now we're down to $2,500 a week for about 12 more days to extend to the next lockdown. And that my concern about taking it out is once it's out, there's no revenue. There's no potential at all for revenue. So there's $80,000 of revenue to me, it looks like, still on that top line. So I'm wrestling with the question of, you know, for another, I don't know, five or six grand, again, I'm going to not look to the treasury person. That keeps us with some ice that, you know, I know we're moving it out, but if it does go to red, that's a lot of revenue that we've now absolutely decided tonight, we're not going to take on any of that revenue opportunity either. So it is, it's an interesting, you know, place to be, but so maybe, maybe the treasurer can just chime in again, is it really the $5,000 that we're looking at here kind of net for tonight?
Go ahead, Mallory.
Thank you, through the mayor, to all of council. So the lockdown is at least until February 11th. So initially, we were, it was supposed to end on the 23rd, and we were going to bring it back to council, but it's been extended till the 11th. So the difference between hydro and Enbridge per month when the ice is in and not being used is about 10,000 to 12,000 per month. So the only thing I fear is that we're holding on to this hope that we have literally no control over, and they've said that they want the numbers to go under 1,000. And I think people are getting restless and not listening as well as they did early on in the pandemic. So I'm afraid we're not going to get there, and even if other municipalities take their pads out, which Port Coburn is taking both pads out, by the way, we still only have so much time, because we're going to likely end up in red after gray, and we have to have the additional half hour in between the, like, we have to space the rentals out because of the number of people that are allowed in the facility at a time. So with the additional time in between the rentals, we lose that many more rentals per day. So even if we are booked solid and the guys are working overtime, because we're booked solid, we're still not going to have that much more revenue to compensate for the other municipalities being closed down.
Yeah, thank you for that, Mallory. I guess one of my concerns with keeping it in, and, you know, I've walked around the problem all, and I'm really 50/50 on it. But if we get to February 11th and it's extended another month, well, we've just spent another $10,000, we're going to be 20-something thousand with no revenue. To the 80% of taxpayers in Wayne Fleet who don't use the ice, that's going to be a very, you know, sore spot with them. That, you know, the council kept the ice in, and then it got extended, and they keep paying for it. And I don't use the ice, and most people don't. So just an, you know, a different perspective to think about, you know, the 80% of people who probably don't use the ice, so. Councilor Criddland?
Well, through you, Mayor, I certainly understand what you're saying. I think a lot of non-users, maybe like myself, still see it as very much of a very valuable community asset. So I think there's much less than the 80% that don't use it. I think there's certainly a real number, you know, that don't want to support having an arena, but I think generally, I think our community benefits, you know, with that arena. So I'm the same, I'm 50/50. Mallory, I think, or through the treasurer's comments, really, was what I had written down in my paper, is we're buying a bit of hope. And so where do we want to sit? And I can support taking it out. I can support leaving it in. That's basically where I'm at. I, if I knew the user groups a little bit more, then, and really felt that those numbers would be, you know, reasonably strong if on February, when it turns red, I want to be optimistic. I think I can support that kind of number till February 11th or 12th. Other municipalities have already decided to keep it. I made a few calls to, like, you know, the or communities with less than 7,000 or 8,000 people and got ahold of another facilities person who is wanting to see what we come up with as an answer, as a matter of fact. But they called 10, like, communities, and two have made the decision to keep it in. So I think it's unique to each community. We're small. All we have is an arena. So you know, I just want to kind of make sure we're taking care of whatever few services we do have left that we could extend a little bit. I would also love to hear from Councilor Gilmore on this. He always has some good closing words.
I was going to say, Will put his hand up next, and then Councilor Gilmore has been unusually quiet so far, so we'll look to hear from him probably after the Mr. C A O speaks.
So again, through you, Mr. Mayor. Staff are certainly not not pleased with having to come to council with this, with this information. We do know the community groups out there that currently use the ice have expressed interest and are prepared to sort of take back to the ice once it reopens. The big unknown is, when is it going to reopen? When is the province going to let us resume operating that arena? Again, when this report was originally presented to you, it was February, or it was January 23rd. In the course of the last week or so, it's now February 11th. The bar keeps getting pushed away from us, and it just becomes apparent to us as staff that there's a break-even point that we're going to hit where it's no longer prudent to continue maintaining that surface, because the tail end, the actual ice time that will be available, again, whether that's six weeks, or whether that's three weeks, or whether that's the lockdown gets extended to a point in April where we can't even maintain the ice surface, because we're into spring, and it becomes truly cost prohibitive to operate. So the problem is, we're trying to make a conscious fiscal decision based on an unknown about when the date the lockdown is going to end, which is frustratingly difficult from a staff perspective. So in that regard, again, from a staff perspective, we're trying to focus on purely financial stuff. And unfortunately, that leaves council in a position where you've got to account for that whole citizen and community side of things as well. So we apologize for that, but, you know, it's not an easy decision. Something like this has never happened in the history of the township. And again, we welcome your direction and thought on this.
Okay, and if February 11th, if we voted tonight to keep the ice in, and February 11th rolls around, and there's another one month extension, fairly prudent at that point, probably, to make a different decision. Councilor Gilmore, anything to say this evening?
Well, there's two moving parts here that, that all I've heard everybody say is some blended concept of what a lockdown is. There's two moving parts. There's a, there's the emergency order, which is extended 30 days, which will be post-January 23, and there's the the stay-at-home police state order that ends on February the 10th. So we're going to get a word on whether that is going to get extended, long prior before the 11th, probably at least a week. So in my view, the other, the other extension is just their standard boilerplate, where we're going to land after, after this stay-at-home thing hopefully is over. But everybody so far has not, no one's pointed that out. It's all been, this is the lockdown. Well, it's not. So on the, on the 11th, that's either, this, where we're in now is either going to get extended, and yeah, then the ice comes out. If we go back to where we were before and what we saw in the last meeting, in red, actually, we make more money than orange. So they're doing us a favor if they leave us in red. And we don't take the last ray of hope that all the people in this rural area that are not causing hardly any of this problem have. So I'm hearing from both sides, from the user groups, I, you know, a few guys say, yeah, just take it out. Others are begging me to leave it in. So I think that, two things. First of all, at the last meeting, we said we were leaving it till the 26th to decide. We should have just done that, because that's what we said we wanted to do. Second, probably a week after that, the third or the fourth, we'll find out whether whether we're going to be camped out in the basement for another month. So to me, I think leaving it till for a couple of more weeks is not the end of the world. I mean, we've, I can count on, I can count on both hands 10 times where we've squandered $5,000 or $6,000 over the last six years of my experience here, and, you know, nobody's too excited about that. So yeah, I mean, I'm I'm probably not the right person to be asking this right now, because I'm doing a slow burn down here. But in my view, I think that that we should have just done what we said we wanted to do the last time, number one, and we should just wait until now. Now wait till we, we know what's happening with the other car that got dropped on us, because they're not mutually exclusive. So, you know, I'm, you know, I'm a little torched. Maybe you can tell that.
Okay, Councilor Van Vliet, you had another question?
No, I was just going to say, I can tell he's a little torqued, and it's been a long time. But I, like, can we just leave it in until we hear?
We just need a motion.
Yep. Okay, that motion, that we leave it in until we hear, like, you don't know. And Terry, I'm hearing it from both sides, keep it in, take it out. But, I mean, it's sat there before, only when minor hockey's used it before, and nobody else is using it, because minor hockey's extended for so long.
Okay, so you're making, John, just hang on a sec, Sherry, you're making a formal motion to leave the ice in?
Until we hear from whatever our next order is or non-order.
Well, I think we revisit it on, at the regular meeting on the 26th, we see if we know anything. And if not, as soon as we hear that if this current situation gets extended, that's a whole different matter than worrying about the, the ongoing 30-day extension of the, of the regular emergency order.
So the motion, Sherry, is then to leave it in for now and to be further discussed on January 26th. That's your motion?
Sure, we'll be in the same spot, for sure.
Okay, can I have a second or for that?
Can I add to that?
Second or to put it on the floor?
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilor Criddland, and discussion, please. Go ahead, John.
So the only thing I would like to add to that is if the government comes down next week or Friday and says, hey, this is going till the end of February. At that point, staff pulls the plug and gets rid of it, so that we cut our losses as right, if we, they come down and say, you can't open up anything till the end of February, because our numbers across the province are too bad, then cut our losses. I agree, keep it open, I don't, till at least our next council meeting, and then we'll see then. But if, if Friday they come up and say that's it, then pull the plug and be done with it, right? How long do you keep throwing good money after that?
Okay, Councilor Criddland?
Can I just then have that clarified in the language that Councilor Gilmore so clearly made the difference, the difference between, you know, the terminology of the lockdown versus the terminology of the state of emergency? So I think it's built, I hope it's building on what Council McClellan is, I think, asking for a friendly amendment for the language. And I think what Council McClellan is saying is so that the staff can just go ahead then with that next step if it's extended. And we'll see if that motion, if that amendment works.
Okay, Meredith or Will, are you formulating that on your computer there, the motion?
Okay, I gotta talk somewhere.
Hey, Councilor Gilmore?
We're not going to, we're not going to know anything by the 26th. All we want to do is just get some update. We're only going to know something when the province says something about extending the stay-at-home order. There's two things going on. Just please use the right terminology for what order we're under. Like, there's a difference between the lockdown, that, that color scale, and the stay-at-home order. It's two different things. So the stay-at-home order is what we're concerned about. The lockdown, we're not concerned about. Because if we go back to red, as I said, that's a bonus, and then the people can get to use it. So I'm with John. If we get word, we're not going to know anything by the next, by next Tuesday. If we get word after that, then the mayor and the C A O can make the decision that it's done. We don't need to revisit this, because if it goes 30 more days, the party's over. That's the middle of March. So all, like, let's just leave it at that.
Okay, so can we include that in the motion as a friendly amendment, Councilor Van Vliet?
Sure.
Okay, so Meredith, do you have that?
I'll second that.
Sorry, through you, sir, can we, can, can we clarify exactly what the amendment is? The second piece, so I have it that we're, you know, it's going to be further discussed at the 26th. So in the meantime, can Councilor Gilmore, can you clarify what it is that we're adding to that motion?
Okay, well, if I was going to make the motion, I would say that that we leave the ice in until such time that the province extends the stay-at-home order. And should that happen, then the mayor and the C A O are authorized to remove the ice immediately. But that, if I was making a motion, that's what I would say.
Okay, Sherry, that amendment is good for your motion?
Sure.
Okay, so, Will, we have to vote on the, no, it's a friendly amendment, so we don't have to worry about that, right? So any other discussion before we vote? Okay, yea or nay, Councilor Criddland? Oh, hang on, John?
No, no, I was putting my hand up, but I didn't know.
In favor.
Sorry, Donna?
In favor.
Hey, Sherry?
In favor.
Councilor Gilmore?
In favor.
And Council McClellan?
In favor. In favor.
Okay, so that's carried. The ice stays in for now. That's carried. That's the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Just one, just one last point of clarification. The stay at home order, and again, I I think staff are completely clear on where where members of council stand. Stand on this. So. Ice stays in until February eleventh. If there is an extension of the stay at home order. Or an extension of the gray, which prevents us from reopening on the eleventh. Then the mayor and C A O, and just so I'm clear, the mayor and C A O are okay to authorize the immediate removal of the ice. If however, on February eleventh. We revert to red. Which will allow ice rentals to occur. Then the ice. Stays in and we continue operations beginning the eleventh.
You got it.
Yep.
Nice.
So, if it's not gonna be the eleventh, you're gonna know about the the third or the fourth, because they'll give us a a week's notice.
Always leak it a week ahead.
So at that point. At that point, if they extend the stay at home, then. Way to go. And then you're gonna have to try to find out whether, if they don't extend it, where we're gonna land. I mean. If we're gonna land in gray and and it takes a week for them to tell you that, like surely somebody can. Can let you know where where they're gonna land us, but. Anyway.
That stuff usually a week ahead, so. All right, so you're finished. There's no other business. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for making time in your week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move forward. Thank you very much.